Since we already saluted the nation's flag and did roll call, we're gonna skip that part. I'd like to announce that we had two executive sessions, one this morning on the ABB property and one this evening that was a personnel matter. Now it's citizens comments. Comments will be taken at this time for any item to be voted on by the board that appears on the agenda. General township comments or questions will be addressed after the Board of Supervisors' Discussion of Old Business. Please step to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
I think it's on the bottom.
Chief Cast, Lawrence Fire and Rescue, I'd like to talk about the second item, I believe, the retention of, or not the retention of, the Township current FCO. I would like, I gave everybody a copy of this letter. It's just a support letter from my end.
No, I'm gonna stop you. If this is specific about a personnel item, it can, we're not discussing it in business. If you have a-
I'm not asking you to discuss it. This is a support letter. I can say what he did for me.
Not at our ti- it's a personnel matter. If you-
Gretchen? I can't do a support letter that he's done a good job for me?
You've received a support letter and the board will consider-
And I want a public record?
It's actually modifying this motion, so it's going to take a different turn in any event, but we've received the written letter and-
Okay. Because it was nothing about you guys.
We understand.
Yeah, discussion of personnel matters either way.
And can I go to the second part of the letter then?
We didn't-
We have the letter.
Yeah, but I, part of the, second part of the letter asks for a definition or a plan. If you do not carry him over, who would be the acting FCO in that part? Because you just can't, if, you need, we need a plan in place in case we don't have an FCO after tonight.
We understand.
And all I'm asking is for that to be given to us tonight or in the very near future.
We understand.
Okay. Thank you, Dan.
Please step to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. My name is Carolyn Jaegel. I'm with Environmental Planning and Design. I am here to give a public comment as it relates to two resolutions that are on the Agenda number 27-2020 and number 28, 2020. In terms of information that had been presented as part of past public hearings, I'd also like to enter some additional information as part of the public comment period so that-
At this point, you're free to comment, but the record is closed.
I understand.
So please understand that that will not, what you say this evening will not be taken into consideration for this, for that specific, for those specific Agenda items because that hearing has already been closed.
I do recognize that the hearing has been closed. I've spoken with the Township staff as it relates to being able to speak as part of the public comment period here this evening. Liz and I have identified that I would have just an opportunity to go over these points. I know my time is limited, so I would just like to speak to a few points.
You're free to speak, but again, just so you understand, the record on that hearing is closed.
Yes, ma'am. I do. From a standpoint of the information about the parcels and their current uses, as well as how they're presented and relate to the existing comprehensive plan, the existing zoning ordinance, as well as your evolution of the proposed comprehensive plan draft, there are a couple of important points. One being that there are two residents and two businesses on the properties as they exist. There are a number of consistencies that can be resolved with the proposed rezoning because as they exist today, a number of things are non-conforming, and so the proposed rezoning would resolve those non-conformities. Secondly, there is a set of mixed use patterns which, within your existing comprehensive plan, the pattern that you have framed out for mixed use in the future, these areas would be bridges between what you've identified on both sides of one property as well as on another side, the main road there and the three properties, so that there would be the ability to have mixed use because that is what is slated in the future. And then, thirdly, that, as there were a number of comments that were driven on things rather than the facts, as part of some of the public hearings, we identify that the analysis that was completed as part of the application was done looking, again, at the patterns and facts within your existing comprehensive plan, the existing zoning, and all the evolution of what has happened through the drafting of your comprehensive plan. There has been additional information that we had for your consideration as part of September discussion and the mixed use proposals, and we would like for that to also just be identified as points that have been as part of this process. The evolution of this to additional consideration for mixed use is one, again, that would-
Ma'am, with all due respect, I'm gonna ask you, just to wrap it up, we, like I said, we've already considered, we already sat through the hearing, and just out of fairness for the public and the residents who didn't know that you were gonna be here to speak, we advised them at the point in time that that hearing was closed. So, I'll ask, I'll give you another minute or so to kind of wrap up and summarize what it is that you're trying to say, but at this point, that, like I said before, that hearing has already been closed.
And also, we're nowhere near adopting a comprehensive plan. So you're saying down the road, the juices, I don't think a lot of them are gonna be.
We had inquired as to the question. I actually was finished with my last statement as to the rationale in terms of these consistencies that would be able to be resolved with that, so I had nothing further, ma'am, as you, I appreciate the time. And secondly, in our inquiries about the status of the comprehensive plan, we had not had anyone to tell us about that specifically in its timeframe, so I appreciate the information because as we understood what was proposed was what was potentially being considered and the consideration for the mixed use that we had requested in September.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Just out of fairness to the residents, if there is anyone in attendance that would like a few minutes to speak relative to that hearing now, would be the time I'd ask you to step to the microphone. Again, keep in mind that that hearing was held in September and has been, or, I mean, it's hold, November, and was, has been closed, so it won't be really considered, but I do wanna give you the opportunity to speak. Okay. Kevin, thank you.
Yeah, Kevin Cameron, 15 Swahart Road. Had a question about two of them. 25, 2020, consider applying for DCNR grant for a Montour Trail connection near Klinger Park. Wasn't there a connection already there? Was never done?
It was never completed. I don't know if you remember, a couple of years ago, probably three or four years ago, when Supervisor Schrader was on the board with me, we worked through some grants, never were successful getting those LSA grants for this. We have some new information that'll be presented in order to finish that project.
So the access to the new property that got built didn't take any trail away or nothing like that? Have we talked to that guy? I mean-
Yeah.
About helping to pay for this?
Yeah. I can give my whole presentation now if you want me to.
No, that's fine.
To answer Kevin's question, when they built the fieldhouse, they built a part of it, but there's still a gap on the township property. Yeah.
The property, and then there's a gap to get it from Klinger Road and bring it over to South Point Boulevard.
Okay, thanks.
So the reserve put their piece in, and the developer, the fieldhouse, they built, there's still two pieces that are missing.
Correct.
And also, Chairman, since you said you could make some comments on those two resolutions, but on 28-2020, you know, I gotta say that for years, you know, I used to own property next to this parcel, and I got to say, you know, this property's been non-conforming for a long time, and, you know, the Dalbo family has been, you know, was great there. I mean, they ran some great businesses, so, that's all I wanna say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Kara Sheridan, 58, North DePauli Road. I just had sort of a question and then kind of just a comment. So regarding those two resolutions, I was just curious because I didn't, wasn't aware that the public hearing was going on, so I'm just wondering, was there any kind of information shared on the proposed use if the rezoning was to occur? Like what would be going there or what would be happening on that?
At the hea- at the hearing, they said that they had no specific plan. They were asking for a general rezoning, but there was no intended use at this point. That's what we were told.
Is it generally on rezoning? Is that something that's shared or not, it's not like required or?
There's no requirement on a rezoning because, say for example, you rezone a property to C1 for Mr. Guzio who wants to do a commercial use there, and then somebody else comes in, that rezoning doesn't revert back to what it was. It stays C1, and whoever utilizes that property after has the ability to use that property for C1. So when you're considering a rezoning of a property, you really don't wanna do it for a specific reason. You're gonna look more generally, it doesn't fit the area.
Okay, great, makes sense. My only other comment is, is there any reason why we can't put an advertisement of when the public hearings are going to occur on the website? Because that's kind of, I mean, the only way, as far as I'm aware, that you can find out if there's a public hearing is if you subscribe to the Observer Reporter and you read it in the Observer Reporter.
I think that's a great idea. Jack, are you okay?
Just as an awareness, I mean, if there's something that's, that affects people, it'd be good for them because, to hear, you know, whatever's being shared about that, so, that's it. Thanks.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Or Facebook page.
Okay.
Hello, my name's Edward Beady, 22 Birch Way, Muse. I wanted to address the AML grant that's listed under New Businesses. Is that something I could do now or would you prefer me to wait till later?
You can do it now if you-
Do it right now? Okay. I'm not gonna get into what happened with the first grant, even though I was kind of dismayed some of the things that took place there, but tonight, I guess, we are aware that we're gonna be facing a new possibility to get a new grant. And I've been a resident of Muse for 38 years. Never really realized what kind of a toxic dump was up on the hill behind the present, brand-new elementary school, and I feel that it's a detriment to my health, to the residents of Muse, to the elementary students there, and it needs to be cleaned up. Does anybody have any educated input as to why we are not gonna take free money to clean this toxic waste dump up? Any of you supervisors?
Well, just so, for a point of clarification, this is, this specific grant is for more than just the cleanup. So you could not utilize this grant to clean it up and leave it as green space. There is a requirement as part of this grant that there's an economic redevelopment of the property, so that means it would have to be utilized for some, some purpose. Office buildings, public works garage, something like that. So if there is a, if the plan, which we've heard from some residents, is clean it up and leave it green space, utilizing this grant would not allow us to do so.
Okay, so, I mean, what is the reasoning behind not cleaning it up and utilizing for some sort of new building? What would be your argument against that?
I mean, I can't, yeah, I can't really speak, I mean-
What's that?
I didn't hear, you said you wanted to-
I said, what, I understand the first grant, we could've cleaned it up, didn't have, necessarily have to build anything on it. That's gone by the wayside. What is the reasoning behind this second grant by not taking advantage of that and actually putting a new, new structures on the, on the property?
So, the first grant, first of all, we were never formally awarded it.
Uh, well, can I, can I?
We can agree to disagree on that. I know what you're gonna say. I'm telling you from my position, we were never formally awarded that grant.
Okay.
Second of all, that grant was for four point, approximately four point, I don't remember the numbers off the top of my head, but approximately four point five, the application or the plan under that grant was actually for $4.5 million.
The first grant?
Yes.
I thought it was 1.88?
That's what they awarded.
So that's what, that, that's what, not with-
They didn't award it.
That's what, so, that's what we were asking for, but there's the economic redevelopment portion of the grant. So there was the grant that we were asking for, which was 1.88, but the economic redevelopment portion was 2.6, and I can pull it up if you give me a second, the exact, it's like $2,666,000 and some change. Hold on, I'll pull it up. But that, what portion of that money was required to come from Township taxpayer funds. So the, you know, what's been out in the public saying, oh, we threw away free money, we, we gave up, first of all, we were never formally awarded it. Second of all, the 1.88 or 1.9 that we were asking for required a significant contribution from the Township that I wasn't comfortable with, and I can only speak for myself, but other board members-
I thought that contribution was a total of like $450,000, was that not true?
I can, give me two seconds and I'll-
I thought we spent $258,000 and-
It's a matching fund, Ed.
No.
Yeah, I understand, but did we not spend $258,000 with testing?
You're mixing up ideas. So, the, the, the $450,000 that you're talking about was the part of the ABB sales agreement that required that we spend $450,000 towards the act to clean up of that property. That 1.88 that we were asking the grant for would go towards the cleanup of the coal refuge pile, and that, it was like 1.1 for the cleanup of the coal refuge pile, and $700,000 towards a road, an access road that would run through. There was still, on top of that $450,000 that we were required to pay, now, a portion of that $450,000 would come off of that 1.9 grant that we applied for, but we were still required, per the grant, per the grant application that we submitted, to spend $2,666,000.
Not true at all. We're kidding that.
It says right here, hold on. Yes, it says it here. Items two and three. So the waste pile cleanup was $1,183,810 funded by this grant that we applied for. There was an access road of $701,500, $701,500 funded by the grant. There was also a portion of the grant application that was for the Public Works Building, that was for the economic redevelopment of the property. Dan, step in at any point if I'm wrong.
No, you're right.
Um, for the economic, that was funded by the Township. That amount was $2,666,625.
And then, hell, some building, we need a new public works building, that's what took us to the top of the list. If we didn't build it there, we're gonna build it somewhere, we're gonna find a space and we're gonna spend it.
That's what I'm saying, though, it was-
It wasn't contingent on that grant, I mean, we-
Yes, it was. That grant, the refund of that grant, us getting that grant money was absolutely 100% contingent upon us doing, us doing economic redevelopment.
We're gonna spend 2.4 million somewhere on our new public works building. If it's not there, it's gonna be somewhere.
But if it's not, but if it's not there, then we don't get reimbursed for that 1.9, right? Dan, am I wrong?
That is correct, yeah. The, the grant was a pilot AML grant, and the, the economic development that they were considering to move the coal waste pile up to be cleaned up more quickly was the fact that there would be economic development, and the economic development that was proposed at that time was the construction of a new public works building. And they accepted that, and the jobs that it would bring, the building construction would be sort of the total investment, that if the, if the state was putting money in to clean up the coal dump, that there was gonna be an investment for some benefit to economic development.
Right.
And that-
Yeah, and it went to 2.4 million, it'd be spent somewhere else if we bought something somewhere else.
If you're gonna build a new Township building, sure, you're gonna spend the money to build it somewhere.
But that specific grant, the reason that a maj-, I can only speak for myself, step in at any point if you don't agree, the reason that I didn't wanna move forward with it was I didn't wanna strap the Township with $200, $2,666,000 commitment to that, because if we didn't move forward with that public built, works building, for whatever reason, that grant is a reimbursable grant. That would mean we would not be refunded the 1.9 million if they had chosen to give it to us. I have never said that I was opposed to the cleanup of that property. In fact, I would like to see it as green space. Having said that, this specific grant application that was submitted, I wasn't in agreement with. I didn't wanna strap the Township with two, a 2.6 million requirement because it was a requirement for this reimbursable grant in order to get that 1.9. Now, having said that, are there things down the road that we could do? Maybe, I don't know. We're still looking into it. That's why we had an executive session this morning.
You say you're not committed to building a new public works building.
I am, not on that location, and you know that. You know that.
So let me ask you, how does that first grant differ from this new possibility to get the grant?
The, the economic redevelopment portion of that would've had to have been different. I, I am chairperson, but that was asked to be put on by Supervisor Cassiolas, and I've said from the beginning of being appointed chairperson, if a board member requests something to be on the agenda, as long as they're willing to defend it, I'm not gonna deny it, as long as we're not beating a dead horse month after month. But Supervisor Cassiolas approached me and the Township manager and asked for that to be on there. You can ask our Township manager. I said, fine with me, as long as he's willing to defend it.
Okay, I, I mean, 'cause I read the-
I'm happy to show, I have the grant application right here. That's where I'm getting the numbers from, I'm not pulling them out of thin air. So I'm happy, after the meeting, if you wanna hang for a few minutes, I'll sit down and show you this and show you exactly what I'm talking about.
Okay, are you guys gonna actually vote tonight on, if you're gonna apply for that grant?
So this is a item under Discussion of New Business, so it's not a specific Agenda item, so there will be a discussion amongst our board members, but there will be no formal vote.
And a form, okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments? The Cecil Township Historical Society will meet on Wednesday, January 15th, 2020 at 7:00 PM in the meeting room of the municipal building at 355 Miller's Run Road. Resolutions. 21, 2020, consider ordinance number 1, 2020 imposing weight restrictions to the Han Road Bridge located 900 feet southeast of the intersection of Georgetown Road.
Right, so this is just a formality. The board previously, at the December meeting, moved to actually do this weight restriction. The Township engineer has already done the study. This is the formal ordinance so that everything is copacetic. You'll have the ordinance. This will be posted and callers will be notified, and then it will take effect.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second? I'll second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0. I need, shoot. 2020, or 2220, discuss, discuss the position of fire code official. I make a motion to suspend Jason Brown without pay pending a hearing.
I'll second it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Eric, did you say? Okay. Passes 5-0. A supplemental motion is to appoint Gretchen Moore as hearing officer to hold a hearing to consider, oh, I'm sorry, to hold a hearing with Jason Brown to consider his employment per his request. The hearing officer will report back to the board with a summary and recommendations. That's my motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0. 23, 2020, consider application for payment number two and final for the work completed to date for the Contract B 2019 pavement maintenance program, milling and paving non-liquid fuels in the amount of $67,676.28 to Young Blood Paving as recommended by the Township engineer.
Yeah, this is the final payment, payment for the 2019 road program. All of the punch list items have been addressed, the maintenance spawn has been provided, so it's our recommendation to make final payment to Young Blood.
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0. 24, 2020, consider application 2019 OO27 for the Traditions of America Phase 2 Subdivision Plan, location Han Road, R2 medium density residential zoning district, applicant Traditions of America. The plan received Planning Commission approval on December 19th, 2019 contingent upon addressing comments from the Township engineer.
Grant Shireen with PBE, here representing Traditions of America. Yes, we did receive a recommendation for final through one of Phase 2. We've received Gateway's letter, and we have actually updated the plans, we just need to submit them to the Township and to Gateway that have addressed all the comments in the recent letter, so we will take care of that. As a quick update, I believe that everybody is very familiar with the site at this point in time, but the site's located on Han Road, the blue is the area that we are currently developing, the red area was something that we had subdivided off previously to be, to stay with the current property, the previous property owner. This is the overall master plan. We are currently working in Phase 1, which is the blue area. There were 67 units there, that is where the clubhouse is. The contractor is currently doing the realignment of Han Road, so they are working through that. The area that we're looking for specifically tonight for approval was Phase 2, which is the area in the green, and that's 65 units. This is just a blow up of Phase 2. It would come up the hillside from the proposed clubhouse, we would come up slope, there would be a connection through, and then also the second point of access down to Han Road would be included in this phase. So with that, I can answer any questions that you have.
I'll comment at this point if the board would like. We have reviewed the plans, and there are a couple very minor comments that Grant said that they still need to address on the plans. In addition to that, they need to do the normal things such as submit their plans to the municipal authority, they have submitted those, they have to provide a cost estimate, they will need a developers' agreement, and my recommendation would be, if you would consider this, if you want to consider this tonight, to just make a contingent upon my January 6, 2020 letter, which includes all of those items.
I wanna go back to what we've mentioned before. Where have you provided any overflow parking?
For the clubhouse or for-
For the houses.
Just in general? There is, there was actually within the preliminary plan, there was approvals for the setbacks, and there was graphics that were shown that there are two car spaces in the driveway, plus two within the garage.
And you could fit those, Ron, before you got to the sidewalk?
Correct. So on the side with the sidewalks, we have a 15-foot setback on sides with sidewalks.
I still don't agree with that. I know I brought that up before about overflow parking and someplace to plow the snow.
These are all items that I believe were addressed during preliminary plan stage.
I don't see where they were addressed.
They, the parking was addressed through the modifications and the setbacks in the agreement to 15 feet on the side with sidewalks. As far as the, as snow removal, I am not, I was not privy to those conversations, so I don't know how that was addressed. It were anywhere within, anywhere within cul-de-sacs. I know that it's a requirement that you guys will require an easement, where snow could be stockpiled now. There are no cul-de-sacs within this proposed plan, other than a temporary cul-de-sac within Phase 7 that would connect to future property.
Dan, I'd like to direct this to you. I believe we got an email this afternoon from Shannon about the sewage here in this Phase 2, it's not been approved by Cecil Township Municipal Authority.
And that's, that's standard, that would be a condition of your approval tonight, that they wouldn't go any further. That's typical, Frank. And I just would comment to the board, with all due respect to Ron, I, I don't, I'm not disagree with your comments, but we did go through a very long PRD process on this, and they have submitted the plan tonight in accordance with the approved PRD. That's the first thing that I look at, and, and if, if you, those comments that you're bringing up now would've been germane to the PRD, which I think you brought them up, but the board still voted to approve the plan as it was submitted with the conditions. And we put conditions on it, like five-foot sidewalks, the road improvements that they're doing all the way up to Maple Lane. There are a number of different improvement, things that the board has, has put upon this through the PRD, but, but I'm not aware of anything related to the parking. This layout is the one that was approved by the board, so.
If I could just ask one quick question as far as sewage planning.
Go ahead.
The planning module was approved, and just today, I actually received an email from the Cecil Township Municipal Authority that they have approved our final plans. I'll make sure to forward that email to Liz and to Dan.
Have a question.
We are actually, we're having also tomorrow a pre-construction meeting with Walter Oshinsky and the consulting engineer, KLH.
I had a question, that letter you stated, Dan, was to date, January 6th.
So did those comments go to the Planning Commission before they came here, or they approved it?
The Planning Commission recommended to approve it conditioned upon them addressing the comments in my letter. My letter was three pages long. We cut it down to just a few comments. There's like three or four technical comments. They're just really labeling on plans, and the rest of them are third-party type comments. The municipal authority and then the developers' agreement is standard. We don't do that until after the board approves the plan, and the same with providing the cost estimates, so.
So if you use today, January 6th, that letter did not go to the Planning Commission, correct? Or the same, you're just readdressing points that the Planning Commission approved?
Planning Commission approved it with these items being addressed. They addressed the majority of them. These are the remaining ones, if that makes any sense?
Okay. Remember, being on the Planning Commission, though, we would have things that were approved based on those things being completed.
Yeah.
Since January 6th, so they weren't actually technically completed.
Yeah. I, again, I'm not taking trap metal for Grant here. His requirement is to finish the plans before we get them to the meeting. And if the board doesn't want to approve it tonight, you have enough time to wait a month. If you'd like to wait a month, you know, we got the plans in on Thursday. We did our best to review them before your meeting tonight, and this is where we stand. There's a couple remaining items, which he says that he's addressed. And I'm comfortable with the consultant. I mean, they're working on almost every plan in the development, and if he says he's going to do something, he does it.
Yeah, I actually spoke with Gateway. We worked through multiple of these comments and made sure that they were addressed. I just need to print the plansets and get them back in. In my opinion, they are all very minor, or as Dan's pointing out, third-party items that happen after final approval is actually issued. So I have no concern with addressing all those comments and being in compliance with the letter provided.
Dan, and you concur with Grant that these are very minor items that can easily be addressed.
But again, I can't, this is the board's decision. If you want to wait a month, you can wait a month. I'm not saying you have to approve it.
Dan, my comment is that, according to what Ron said, I know he said we'd addressed that. I know he brought up the parking, and I can't remember any plan we've ever approved that didn't, since Georgetown Estates went in in the 80s, that we didn't require off-street parking. And I know, I thought they said they would address it. Were we remiss in approving a preliminary plan if it didn't have it? They come for the final plan. A preliminary is preliminary for us and them. And I, I mean, if we were remiss in not seeing that, that they didn't address that, as Ron brought it up, I don't know why we can't address it as a final step here.
I mean, McConnell's Trails has three...
Remember, these are not townhouses. These are single-family homes. Each one of them has double-car garages, and there's room in the driveway to park two more cars before you get to the sidewalk. When I recall from the PRD approval, that was sufficient to satisfy the board. Plus, Grant, talk about your clubhouse. Don't you have parking?
There is parking within the clubhouse, but that is specific to...
Well, I brought that up specifically and asked you if you thought there were enough for your events at a clubhouse, and you felt, I mean, you're the expert at that. You felt that was good, but that didn't account for people who have company that are going to start parking in your clubhouse, parking a lot just for their own company.
The conversation about the clubhouse was specific to events within the clubhouse.
Right.
What we're talking about now is guest parking spaces.
No, that's what I brought up before, was overflow parking. Now, I know up in McConnell's Trails, they got three overflow lots up there.
We do, and there are townhomes within that development.
And on the other side of Trail, there's two lots up on the other side of Trail.
Yes, sir, there are.
Would there be...
Not now, I know that. They're just building single families.
Would there be anything to prevent, these are single-family homes? Like, when I have guests over, people that no longer fit in my driveway, park along the fronts of our homes, why temporarily, why couldn't you do this in this situation?
To my knowledge, the whole discussion with the setbacks related to this exact issue, with making sure that there was adequate space for guest parking within driveways that would not conflict with the sidewalks.
Didn't, in fact, didn't you bring a picture with a model of a car?
This was, this was slides from Victor Wetzel Associates, who had run this through the preliminary plan and received the modifications for the setbacks. Specifically, I believe that they were discussing guest parking spaces.
But you're talking two different things completely. You're talking about keeping the cars from blocking the sidewalk, and I'm talking about overflow parking. They're completely different.
I believe that the guest parking spaces were addressed with the driveway spaces, because there are also two-car garage.
That was only so they didn't block the sidewalk. That was the argument when we had the first meeting. The cars would be blocking the sidewalks. So you didn't adjust that to compensate for lot parking on the street. You did that so you could get the cars in the driveway and not block the sidewalk.
All that I could say at this point with that conversation is that we have preliminary PRD and a final PRD approved. We also have an overall preliminary plan approved. There have been multiple opportunities to where if we were going to be required to provide guest parking, we could have done that. We are very deep within this process at this point, especially when we've already received final approval for Phase 1, where we start to have this conversation now at Phase 2. So I understand the point. A lot of the issues from my knowledge of what's happened within the township has come from, as Dan said, with townhomes. In this instance, it's single-family. So I'm just going to ask that tonight, if there could be a recommendation made based on a conditional approval letter, we proceed in that manner. At this point in time, going back and revisiting and looking at the street design, grading, utilities to provide parking spaces, we're looking at redesigns. All right, make a motion.
So at this point, if you're done, I'm going to ask if there's a motion to consider the application.
I move to table the application.
I would second it.
There's a motion on the floor to, and a second to table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, thank you.
25-2020, consider applying for a DCNR grant for the Montour Trail Connection near Clinger Park. This is similar, if you remember, I forget, in the summer at some point, we had to take a board vote to approve the LSA grant for bridges. It's a formality. It's a requirement as part of the grant. If, for those of you that aren't familiar, probably three years ago, 2016, 2015 or so, a former supervisor and I had worked towards a DCNR grant for a Montour Trail connector that would connect the Montour Trail up into South Point. It's actually a three-phase project that would include the connector, some sidewalks, parking, a soccer field, a playground, a concession stand, a dog park. It's a whole big plan. I was actually, I actually had a meeting a couple weeks ago with the Washington County Chamber of Commerce, specific to this grant. They would like to bring it back up, and they would like to throw their weight behind it. So they are willing to give us towards that project right off the top $50,000. We also had a conversation with Crown Castle. They have also committed to $50,000. We've gotten a $20,000 commitment from Washington County Redevelopment Authority. We are just starting this process. The grant application opens January 15th and goes until mid-April. I think it's April 22nd or so. We are on track, actually, at this point, to have the Phase 1 of the grant fully funded before we even submit the DCNR grant, which we would open to the whole thing, to all three phases, if that's the case. We plan to reach out to other businesses in South Point as this directly impacts them. Their employees can utilize the trail for exercise during work hours. It's really a great thing, and for those of you that utilize the trail, which I do here on this side of the town, it's wonderful. And please understand, there are zero taxpayer funds that would go into this. We would not use any taxpayer funding, even though it's township-owned property. There would be no taxpayer. We are funding this 100% through donations and grants. So that's what this DCNR grant is for, the Montour Trail Connector near Clinger Park. Anybody have any questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. 26-2020, consider pavement markings for O'Hare Road. Supervisor Giselle, you want to?
Yes, I've been getting a lot of complaints from residents who live up in Mayfair Meadows and travel O'Hare Road every day, and also some residents from Cannonsburg complaining that we need lines on the road. In my experiences over the years, paving roads over 40 years throughout many municipalities and boroughs, I see a four-inch, single-yellow line on these roads. But I'd like to read a short article from our Pennsylvania Township News Magazine. It addresses this, and it says, "May we use a single solid yellow center line on a narrow public road? According to Federal Highway Administration, a single solid yellow center line on roads open to traffic, including rural, residential, or narrow roads, is not allowed. A single line introduces ambiguity to the motorist, does not adequately communicate whether passing is allowed or prohibited in one or both directions. Using a single yellow center line would only save six to eight inches in width compared to a double line. And even on narrow roads, this savings is not considered significant enough to warrant compromising the double-line system, which is well-established and collectively understood by road users." So I'm asking this board tonight to consider placing a double-yellow line on O'Hare Road.
I'd like to speak on this matter. Frank, you went out and had an opportunity to talk about it. And I'm just going to put this out here, because I also have been with this for 40 years. It's been my experience over the years.
It's been my experience, and you and I talked about this, that there's a tendency that once you line stripe a road like that, that the speeds, and we have found over the, I have found over the years in doing this, that the speeds have a tendency to increase. People sometimes see the double-yellow and don't really pay attention to the speed limit signs. You'll see speeds 35, 40 mile an hour, as you would on a regular 35 mile an hour road. There's a tendency not to pay attention as much to the speed limit signs. So what was initially complained about was the visibility of the roadway alignment and stuff, ends up being an enforcement issue for the police departments. And I think you'll find that you'll have much more, many more complaints with speeding as opposed to complaints about legible roadway markings. So I'm just putting that out there as my experience with the double yellows or single yellows on a 25 mile an hour posted road. There's a tendency for the speeds to go up, and then we have issues that we have to enforce through the police department. So that's all I'll say on that. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. I did drive the road one night in the rain in that. And there is insufficient lighting, and the terrain of the road, it's windy, it's uphill. I did discuss this matter with our police chief, and people are going to speed, no matter whether it's one line, two lines. People drive, that's just their style of driving. I think what people are looking for is a guideline at night, something on that road that they can see that identify that, hey, you know, I'm on my side of the road, and they feel a lot safer. That's what I'm looking at here, the safety of the residents that travel this road.
I also talked to Sean about that a couple months ago, and I think he concurred with Bill that it does tend to increase speeding. But I think the same amount of people speed, I don't think it's going to make more people who don't speed, speed, and maybe they feel more comfortable that they can stay in their lane better and go faster, and I think that's the only reason. But that's not going to make, I'd have to say, most people don't speed on the roads. The speeders get the attention, but they're probably a minority that actually speed compared to all the cars that travel that road. So it seems like it's, we're almost penalizing the people that don't speed and need some safety, and like Frank said, the curves and bends and the hills and everything like that. Especially when the road's wet. I heard what you said last time, but like I said, I still think lines would make it safer for the normal people.
It seems to be a cut-through road. It seems like people coming down Muse Bishop Road are using that to hurry up and jump out to 980s. So I think they have a tendency, they're in a hurry to go to work, come home from work, they're speeding on this road. But it's bad at night. There's not sufficient lighting on the road.
Moeney's probably the same way. It's just it's traveled. And I think those are the two most traveled roads that we have that are the most windiest for heavily traveled roads, so I also suggest we do Moeney. So let me just add one more thing. From my point of view, as the Director of Public Works, I have many roads similar to this. Burnside Road comes to mind that have high-traffic counts on them. I mean, if we do this road, do we do other roads? And are we now at a point where we need to start putting a...
Yeah. I think you did say, Bill, about implementing a line painting program.
Let me just move forward with the comment that I have. I think what we need to do is, if the board approves this, be prepared to put a contract out every year for the line striping, a separate line-striping contract that the township controls.
And I would be okay with that.
Yeah, I would too. I was actually surprisingly shocked at how inexpensive line painting actually is. Supervisor Giselle had... Yeah, Supervisor...
A millennial foot.
Yeah. Yeah.
Not 12, 15 cents a mile, right?
No, a foot, a millennial foot.
But Bill, here's what concerns me. That's all fine if our roads were wide enough, but you're going to end up someplace with two lanes seven foot wide. I mean, over on, by South Point, what's the road? 15 foot wide. So how's it going to work? When there's an accident, who crossed the line? You know what I'm saying? Our roads just aren't wide enough.
But we, my only point is, that's not the only road I like. Burnside comes to mind. It's like that Clinger Road comes to mind. Those are access, major access to the business park. For me, I look at, you know, how do I get this done? And because this has to be done annually, and these are waterborne paint marks, they have to be freshened up every week.
I mean, I was with you when you actually didn't want the turnpike to put a yellow line over on Laurel Hill.
I make a motion that we put the double-yellow line on O'Hare Road.
I'll second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Just a caveat on that, that the work will probably not be able to be done until we don't, there's no sulk on the road, and we at least have 50 degrees, that's what they said. So it wasn't looking as favorable, as soon as conditions would warrant, that would be the time to do it, so.
It was 60 on Saturday, and I actually talked to some of the people at the parking lot company, and they felt pretty confident that with the winter we've had, they can get something done.
It was just a caveat in their proposal.
Yeah, yeah.
The other thing I might suggest that we do is, we're trying it out. It doesn't hurt to try. But I also make a motion that we also do Moeney Road right now, and have two roads to try it out on and see how it goes.
I'm fine with that. Did you make that as a form of motion?
I would agree. I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We also line paint, double-line paint, Moeney Road. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? 5-0. So we're going to do O'Hare and Moeney. 27-2020, consider the request to rezone 3.4 acres from R2 to C3. Location, intersection of Shafoni Road at O'Hare Road. Applicant Fred Dalbo, Cannonsburg Supply and Equipment. A public hearing was held November 18th, 2019. Do I have a motion to, on this item resolution? So this item fails for lack of a motion. 2018-2020, consider the request to rezone 20.8 acres from R1 to C3. Location, 1710 and 1718 980 Road. Applicant Fred Dalbo, Cannonsburg Supply and Equipment. A public hearing was held November 18th, 2019.
I make a motion.
Do I have a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. 29-2020, consider the contract for auditing service to Jose Speck Muson Wood LLP for a three-year period at a cost of $10,900, $10,900, and $11,150. I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Tom, did you say?
Yes, pass.
Passed 5-0. 30-2020, consider terminating the contract for website hosting services with government office to be effective July 9th, 2020.
Make a motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. 31-2020, consider the contract for website design and hosting services to Civic Plus for a three-year period at an annual cost of $10,772.66.
Make that motion.
I'll second.
Could we have that to, will that be starting after July, July 9th?
Yes, it takes six to, what was it, six to eight months to build it out? So we'll keep our current one while we're building that one out, and then move to this one. one.
And maybe, well, I guess it's in the contract, but the, is it the third or the fourth year that's 4,700?
Correct, fourth year.
Fourth year. Maybe just put it in the motion so we have it on record.
Well, we're only approving a three-year contract, so in the fourth year, we would approve that.
Is that, Dawn, would we still get that 4,700 for the fourth year?
You would, if you were to return the service in the contract, yes.
Okay.
32, 2020. Consider the formal easement, I'm sorry, let's, did we pass that?
We need a vote after discussion.
I'm sorry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0. 32, 2020. Consider the formal easement agreement between Cecil Township and the US Department of Veterans Affairs related to the bridge over and across Morgan Road, a township road.
So this is a, this is a plan that's been on the table for quite a while. The Veterans Affairs related to the cemetery approached the Township. I've been working with Gretchen related to this. They're proposing a structure to cross Morgan Road. You can see right here, there's a bridge proposed to come across, and they would come down off of the bridge and then create another access point onto Morgan Road right here. The, the bridge as it's designed, there's multiple sheets here. You can see a little bit closer. It's, it's designed as a, like a con span structure. They would have total responsibility for, for this bridge. This wouldn't be a township bridge. But typically, you don't need any approval when you're a federal, the federal government for anything. They've never needed any approvals from the Township for their site plans or whatever. But in this event, because they're crossing our road, they made this request. Gretchen's been involved, and I guess the best way to handle this is with an easement. So I believe what's in front of you tonight would be the easement, which would contain the bridge, which would be maintained by the Veterans Affairs. You're just giving them the right to use your road. Correct, Gretchen?
Right, well, that's correct. Essentially, the airspace over the road, it's, they're fully responsible for their construction and maintenance of the bridge, their indemnity provisions, insurance provisions, and protections for the Township. And this has taken quite some time, as Dan mentioned, you know, negotiating with the federal government just takes time. So unfortunately, it has been a year or two, but it's finally done. I mean, I am holding the original, which is signed by the Department of Veterans Affairs. So if the board approves it, we will then sign off on it and get it recorded, and we should be in good shape.
Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Do I have a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Before you go on to just the routine things, I think that during deliberations of those, the rezoning request for those two items on 27 and 28, I think, I thought the board had a commitment during deliberation that we weren't going to leave an applicant hanging or all the residents hanging on it. And no vote didn't help anybody. It didn't help the applicant, and there's no answer to it. It didn't help the interested residents who were even in attendance. It could come up again next month or the next month.
So are you asking that we take a formal vote?
What I'm saying, that we committed to at least coming to a determination and not let it hang out like what happened with Mr. Fuchs. He's dragged out for a year.
All right, so...
But the point is, I think, on both of them, I think we still have to take action, and at least we committed to it, and I think we owe it to the applicant and to the residents.
Okay, so you want to make a motion? You had the opportunity at that point in time to make a motion to open it up for a vote.
Well, I'd make a motion on the first one.
27, I'll read it. 27, 2020. Consider the request to rezone 3.4 acres from R2 to C3. Location, intersection of Shafoni Road at O'Hare Road. Applicant Fred Dalbo, Cannonsburg Supply and Equipment. A public hearing was held November 18, 2019.
Again, I'd make that motion because I considered, as we talked about, it's spot zoning.
Right, to make a go.
We can't do it.
Right, and I'll second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Wait, wait, wait. We're voting, if you say aye, you're voting to rezone this.
No.
No, the motion was to deny it.
Deny it, okay. Formally deny, okay. I didn't hear that part.
So you just did a revote on that one, is that what happened?
We're not revoting, we're, it never, it never made a motion for these, it never moved forward, so he's actually making a motion to...
To deny it, you're specifically.
Yes.
Okay, affirmatively denying it.
Okay.
Okay.
So it was moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes 5-0. So that is officially and formally denied.
And then 28, 2020...
2020. You want to read it, or you want me to?
You have to read it.
Just so they know what we're voting on. Consider the request to rezone 20.8 acres from R1 to C3. Location, 710 and 1718 980 Road. Applicant Fred Dalbo, Cannonsburg Supply and Equipment. A public hearing was held November 18, 2019. So you make an, you're making another motion today.
I'm making a motion to deny that also. I think the applicant wasn't served well by his professional who, when, I don't think they understand that he's hurting himself asking for C3 when he has non-conforming industrial, and I think that's the type of business he still needs to have there.
Okay, so you made a motion to deny.
Also, that is spot zoning once again.
Correct. So I'll make, I'll second the, the motion to deny. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Passes 4-1. The denial passes 4-1. Okay, thank you. Thank you for bringing that up. 33, 2020. Consider the minutes from the Monday, December 2, 2019, monthly meeting of the Cecil Township Board of Supervisors.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0. 34, 2020. Consider the minutes from the Monday, December 16, 2019, special meeting of the Cecil Township Board of Supervisors.
Make a motion.
I'll second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0. 35, 2020. Consider the general fund invoices from December 1 through December 31, 2019. I'll make a, Tom made a motion, I'll second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Eric?
Aye.
Okay. Township engineer, Dan, your report.
Yes, just a couple items to mention to the board. Number one, we received some bridge reports. The standard bridge inspections were completed for the Ridgewood Bridge and also for the Creedmore Bridge. Dawn passed those along. We're working with Bill right now to come back to the board with some recommendations. The Ridgewood Bridge needed posted. Bill's got the signs in. That will be done here post haste. The Creedmore Bridge is also going to need to be posted, but it's a much higher weight allowed. But the Ridgewood Bridge is in pretty bad condition. Again, we're going to come back to the board with some alternatives to consider either a number of different things that I've talked to Bill about, we'll bring that back to you next month. Related to the sanctuary development over off of O'Hare Road, the board already authorized the Township to act as the applicant for the Pendott Highway occupancy permit. Dawn received that last week, and he asked me if it was okay to sign. I looked it over. Technically, it had everything we needed. Dawn got from them today a resolution. Pendott will not accept it unless there's a resolution that authorizes Dawn to sign on the behalf of the Township. So I know we don't have an item on the agenda for this tonight, but I think what we're asking for is an authorization for the Township manager to sign the HOP application for the sanctuary development on the behalf of Cecil Township. And that's in the form, should be in the form of a resolution. And I think it would be 36, 2020 if you decide to do it.
I'll move to approve that resolution.
I'll second it.
Give it a number, though, the actual number.
Yeah.
36.
36, 2020.
Karen, would you check on that and make sure?
Will you check to make sure? Yeah, that's next. 36, 2020 is next. Yep, 36, 2020. Tom made a motion. I'll second it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0.
And then the last thing I just wanted to bring up is related to the Poly Road. There was a question last month related to Range Resources and their participation in the, the Poly Road improvements. We have talked to them. They're in agreement with the plan that's been presented for them, conditioned upon the Township obtaining the easements for the storm sewer and any widening that's required. So nothing's going to be able to be done there until the springtime anyway, but we can move ahead with obtaining those easements for the storm sewer that we need and keep that project moving forward. So I just wanted to bring that up to the board. And that's it. And if there's any other questions, you have a copy of my report.
Yes, before we go any further, Bill and I have been up McConnell Trails, they have some serious problems. They got landslide already. It's sliding behind current townhouses, right, Bill? And up on top of the hill, it's sliding in a cut area very bad. And I don't want to be another Strabane where we end up in the middle of a major lawsuit.
Yeah, you've, you brought this up.
I mean, I've talked to you, I know you said they were sending a geotech guy out, but Bill and I actually, in Marano, sat and watched the hillside actually sliding down, and it's getting wider and wider.
Right.
And it's all in a cut area up on the very top.
Well, there's a couple things that you could consider, and we probably need to talk about this a little bit more. Number one, I've already put the developer on notice of the issue. I've been informed that he's going to come back to us with what their plan is to address it. So that's, that's on their end.
As, as we talked about, but I just wanted, I want it on record.
Yeah, sure.
So that doesn't come back. You look, Strabane's at $7 million for that slide.
I'm deeply aware of that one. The, the other, the other thing, Gretchen, I don't know if, if there are issues on lots that are starting to become problematic. I mean, we do issue building permits, so until, until issues are resolved related to those particular lots, could we hold on building permits?
Which development is this?
This is in McConnell Trails. Could we put a moratorium on the building permits being issued in that area until they address that issue?
We can talk about that. We've discussed some things with the zoning officer.
Can you use your microphone?
We can discuss that. We've, we've talked about some things with the zoning officer, and we currently actually have something at the District Justice, a violation that's going to a hearing.
Oh, that's just about them working on Sundays.
Correct, great. Is there something else happening for which you want to...
Well, this is, this is a potential issue that could affect lots that are going to be built upon, that the, that the hillside is giving away. There's a seam of clay there that's, that's creating some problems.
So is there an imminent, is there an imminent concern?
Well, yeah, there's a concern that they would start building on something, and then potentially the hillside falls down behind the hill.
Sure, sure.
Well, I, I just want to be careful because contractually, those lots could already be sold or committed to, or, you know.
But ultimately, it's our responsibility to make sure that hillside doesn't slip.
Well, see, see, that's where it gets, that's where it gets, and again, I'll defer to the solicitor. We're, we're responsible for the public improvements, which would be the roads and the sewers within there that we own and operate. The lots are contractually an issue between the developer and Ryan Homes. We have a responsibility to make sure that if there's a problem there, I'm sure we can call it out and we can require something to be done, but we're, we're not involved in approving those lots other than, you know, their, their use. Again, I've been through this, I've learned about it through North Strabane.
I was just going to ask, like, North Strabane, Frank and I heard, they were, they were at the LSA asking, because they need to come up with $7 million for their slide in Majestic Hill.
Yeah, they've, they've taken a position to move the road on their own. They want to, their, their public improvements are in the way. I don't think our public improvements are in jeopardy here. This is, this is in a, in a cut slope in the rear of the lots, which could potentially affect the use of the lots, so.
So you think it's something that will affect the lots only, not our public improvements, and these lots have not been developed at all yet?
Well, they're, they're being developed now.
They are?
Yes.
Okay, I think we...
And they're a part of an approved, recorded plan.
Yes.
So, you know, they're...
But also, I think the question is, though, can we deny, put a moratorium on all the building permits because the history up there, that they're having different slides in different places. Dan's not suggestion, suggesting, don't issue a permit where we see an active slide, but make them address the slides themselves before we issue any permit. Because if you issue one on a, one that's not sliding today, tomorrow it can start sliding after you issue the permit. I think that's what you're asking.
Well, it is, that is correct, yes.
So maybe instead of putting you on the spot, let's give you...
We should talk further about it, so that I fully understand, and we should look at the, whatever options we have. Obviously, public safety is a high concern as well, but then we have these contractual issues to deal with.
But correct me if I'm wrong, as a board, we are all okay with the potential of putting a moratorium on permits while this issue is figured out?
I am.
I am, too. Eric, everybody. So you have the majority of the board saying that if that, if you are able to come to that conclusion, we are okay with it? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll talk further.
Also, Dan, Bill was saying the roads they've done up there, they're going to have to all be milled down.
I can't hear, I'm sorry, what'd you say, Ron?
From them running the heavy equipment on and gouging them all up. That, that is the finish coat that they put on, right?
Your solicitor has had wearing course on.
Yeah, the first wearing course, not the second wearing course. Yeah, I've already put them on notice by letter that, that they had heavy vehicles on, on the road, and that I've told them that we've not even discussed or come to any conclusion how we would test those roads or what we would require them to do before we would accept it. We put them on notice, Ron. I want to see what the ramifications are. We don't know yet what that is, how we want to test it, what we want them to do. We've required extended maintenance bonds in the past.
Okay.
I mean, there's other, there's some things that we can talk about, but I don't think we need to decide it right now, but we did put them on notice.
Okay, thank you. On that note of the slides, though, we do have the geotech studies that are done, right, for all the new developments, which is, that protects us there from the slides, we're correct?
Yes. What on McConnell, what we, what we require, and again, we don't, we as the Township don't want the liability of being out there to watch every spoon of dirt that they move around. Again, that, those lots are a contractual issue with them and Ryan Homes. So what we require them to do, though, to protect ourselves, is that we require a geotechnical study, we require them to do geotechnical inspections, they're required to give us those reports, and then they're required to give us a certification at the end before we take over any of the public improvements. So that's on every note of every plan that is ever approved by this board. I've made sure that, that's been in place for 10 years.
So we've had it, but North Strabane had just implemented it, right? And that could be part of the problem why they had the slides, and we should be safe and fine?
No, I, I, I don't want to, I don't want to speculate in public about what happened in North Strabane, but it, it, it was a, a number of different circumstances that made that happen. There's usually more that happens behind the scenes that we don't know about. But, but in this case, we're, we're protected, the township's protected, that, that we are not responsible for the geotech, but we are requiring the developer to do things to protect the public, is the best way to put it.
I will.
Okay, Gretchen?
Um, so nothing really significant to report for December, other than really day-to-day workings with the manager and zoning officer and engineer on a variety of matters. Other than that, that's, that's it.
Thanks. Um, Bill, Director of Public Works.
Uh, thank you. Um, just a couple of things to, uh, report, discuss. The drainage issue with Laurel Hill and Sunset has been addressed. The Turnpike hired Allison Park Construction to install the drainage swill and get the water to go into the inlet over there. I'm, uh, quite pleased with the work that was done. There's still a little bit of work to do on the roadway itself, coming down Sunset, the, the water's leaving the gutter line, and the pavement needs pressed there, and we'll get them to, uh, address that. The other, uh, topic of note is the township jail. We, uh, recently covered that with the, uh, remaining tarp that we had from our salt storage shed that was damaged last winter, and, uh, we now have a, a fairly heavy cover on that. And I would suggest to the, to the board that, uh, thinking about the jail and its future and its location, that you may consider repurposing those brick up there for something, uh, like fireplaces in the park. Thank you.
Um, Dawn, you said you had an administrative report.
Yes, Madam Chair, excuse me, I just have one item. Uh, I have received letters of inclusion from all supervisors participating in the township's health plan. Uh, these letters will be filed pursuant to the Second Class Township Code. That's all I have.
Okay. Um, Board of Supervisors discussion of new business. Tom, do you want to talk about the AML?
Dan, we had talked about the IA, um, AML grant.
Yes.
And I think you looked into, and I think, uh, Fisher talked about some of the terms of it, but, uh, for, for our old grant, it was actually approved, I think it was a prior board that, uh, that had committed to, um, for, for that grant, for that building, for the public works building. And, and I understand how democracy works, and a new board can change the, the plan on that. And I, I, that's, that's what happened, but at the time, that, that was a contingent, uh, and it was a necessary thing for us. That was really the only reason we were interested in that property. But now this grant, can you tell us how we might be able to get this, uh, thing cleaned up? Uh, and what's the best way to get that grant?
Yeah, I, I, after, yeah, the, the best way to approach this would be continue to pursue the AML pilot money, and the pilot money would include some sort of, uh, an economic development of the property. So, uh, what we need to do is probably at least speak with the people that run that grant program and determine from them what would they be looking for in terms of some sort of an economic development study, or what would it take, uh, if we still wanted to apply with, for pilot money, if the township was not going to do the public works building there any fur, anymore, but, but want to consider the land for some future use or some future development, what, what would they require? Can we take that approach? I'm not, I'm not sure on that, uh, what they would say, but they, they want to see economic development.
Would they give you some kind of a guideline?
I'm sure they have examples of that, that, that might have done on other programs, because when I look into the AML pilot program, they give out about twenty-five million dollars every year on this program. So I'm sure they have examples of other places where people have done this and what, what else can be done. So what I'd like to do is just, just do a little bit of research with them, come back to the board, and give you guys some options, if there are any related to pursuing that grant. That, that's all, that's all I can tell you at this point.
Do all this before the deadline, just in case we do decide to apply?
I don't, I don't believe there is a deadline coming up.
That's what I was going to ask, what is the deadline?
Yeah, there, there, the, the deadline, well, there, there's nothing, nothing that is announced that, anything for twenty twenty yet on their website. So I think they roll that out at some point. I'll speak to them tomorrow morning, and I can find out from, from, from them if there is, and I think it's a rolling deadline when you get something in. Uh, the last time we submitted it in August, they didn't look at it until September. So I don't, I'm not aware that the, the pilot money, there might be something on the regular AML grants, it's due, due right now, but again, we know that'll just go to the bottom of a pile.
All right, so, I mean, I think Gretchen sent me a copy, it might have been just the regular AML grant that she sent me, but it did say January thirty first is the deadline for that. So if there's a difference between A, A, AML, regular program and, okay, then.
There is difference between the pilot.
So I'm asking him to, or anybody to approve, uh, the application for it, because we at least authorized Dan to look into that, to get us the information so we can decide.
I don't think we need a, I mean, that's fine. If you want to get information and bring it to us, that's fine. So, yep, okay. Thanks, Dan. Um, Board of Supervisors discussion of old business, I apologize, Charlie, my fault, I, I do the agenda and I didn't put this stuff on there, but, uh, I'm very happy to say that we were awarded a hundred, that, one hundred thousand dollar LSA grant that I'd been working on, uh, with Dan Dizroth and Jason Ortite, um, for bridges in Cecil Park. So that is awesome. All of our bridges will be, um, redone sometime in twenty twenty this year, hopefully as soon as, sorry, can you hear me? Hopefully as soon as we can move forward with that. So we got a hundred thousand dollars, which was awesome. We were one of, what, thirty six? I think it was thirty six, um, grants awarded by the LSA. Uh, we also have received, in coordination with Jason Ortite's office, two additional grants. Um, one was a fourteen thousand dollar grant for handicapped swi, handicapped swings for parks. Um, there's two of them, believe it or not, they're seven thousand dollars apiece, um, and we have been awarded two. There will be a, um, unveiling of that whenever they are ready. I, I think Jason said at some point in the, in mid-January. Um, we also, I also worked with Jason Ortite's office to get another grant for a drone for Cecil Township Police. Um, Cecil Township Police were, were awarded a five thousand dollar grant for a drone for use of, in, in their police work. So that was, so that was awesome. There were three grants that we received within the past, uh, really couple weeks. Um, continue to work with grants over the next. As you can see, we're working on the DCR, DC and R grant, and then we have meetings set up with, uh, Representative Ortite's office to talk about grants for the Lawrence Sewage Project. Any other citizens, general comments or questions?
Hold on one second. I think Cindy might have said it wrong. We're not redoing the bridges, we're putting two new ones in that you can drive across.
Three new ones? Well, three new bridges.
Two that you can drive across.
Correct, that's correct.
Two that you can drive across and then one in the middle. I couldn't remember off the top of my head, yeah. So, yeah. Um, and then, um, I'm sorry, citizens, general comments and questions?
Kevin Cameron, fifteen, Swahili Road. Madam Chair, I'd like to address Supervisor Fleer and Supervisor Cassiolis' comments in regards to, um, uh, off-street parking. I agree a hundred percent.